All right, Commissioners, if we're ready. Ready, everyone ready? Ariana, you good? All right. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, regular Planning Commission hearing. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ariana, report on posting the agenda and roll call, please.
The agenda was posted on Thursday, March 27th, 2025, at 4:55 PM. Roll call? Commissioner Benson? Absent. Commissioner Ellie?
Present.
Commissioner Kushner?
Here.
Commissioner Liengard?
Here.
Commissioner Valdez?
Here.
Vice Chair Donauer?
Here.
Chair Bondal?
Here.
Thank you, and as a reminder to Commissioners and staff to please turn on your mic when speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana. Ariana, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
There are no speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, 5.1, March 13, 2025, Planning Commission meeting minutes. Commissioners, any questions, comments, concerns? I motion we approve the minutes.
A second.
And to confirm, the second was Commissioner Ellie? Thank you. Roll call? Commissioner Benson?
Oh.
Should I hold off on roll call? We are approving the consent agenda. So, roll call? Commissioner Benson? Commissioner Ellie?
Yes.
Commissioner Kushner?
Yes.
Commissioner Liengard?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donauer?
Yes.
Chair Bondal?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to six, public hearings, we have none. Moving on to seven, new business, we have none. Item eight, informational items. Civic Center Master Plan presentation will be provided at the meeting by the project manager, Ryan Ozzington. Ryan, you are up.
Hi. How's everybody? Thank you all for having me today. My name's Ryan Ozzington. I'm the project manager here for the city. I started back in September, and one of the things that I have been working on is our Civic Center Master Plan. Just to give you guys a little bit of background, the current Civic Center Master Plan was adopted in 2002. The plan that I am working on is an update to the portions of that plan, is not an update to the portion of the plan that was put in place. So, the one from 2002 got us the police headquarters and the library. The rest of that plan has not been used and has been placed on hold. So, our new plan, which was approved by the council in November, where we hired ELS to be the architect of record, will give us a better utilization of the space, it'll add enhancements that our community needs and has requested. It'll be new replacement facilities for our senior center and City Hall, new facilities like a recreation center and aquatic center, and a new park to better connect to the downtown area. Like I said, we've hired ELS to be the architect back in November through a bid selection process, and ELS has presented internal staff with the following three options earlier this week, and they will be presenting these to the public at our community workshop meeting next Tuesday, April 8th. So, if you're all available, we'd love to see you there. We have two meetings scheduled for that day. The first is at 9:00 AM and the second is at 6:00 PM. Both of those meetings are going to be held at Wheeler Center. So, I'll run through these, just a couple of key pieces, nothing too crazy here. The main thing that I would advise is, when you view these, I can answer some questions on it, but I just saw them yesterday from the first time myself, so I don't have all the answers to them yet. I would say, if you have questions that I can't answer today, please come to one of our meetings on Tuesday so we can address that with ELS. ELS will be gathering feedback from the community and applying those changes and recommendations from the community to the final product that they plan to present to the community for final rounds of feedback on May 20th. May 20th will be our next and final community workshop meeting. So, the main thing to point out here is, this plan would create one surface-level parking location around the library where the current senior center exists. This added with some street parking would total about 380 surface-level lots, or surface-level stalls, which is a good thing for us. It means we don't have to build a parking structure within this footprint. As you can also see, we would be adding a recreation and aquatic center right over the footprint where current City Hall is. We'd be moving City Hall to the corner of 7th and Church, kind of where the annex parking center is, and we'd be adding the arts and senior center at the current location of the Wheeler Center. And then, to me, one of the best parts about this is we'd be adding a new park into the downtown area. We don't have too many public parks within our downtown footprint, so this would be a great space. These three lines you see here would be a public amphitheater, so tiered seating, that's all grass, that would be kind of a place to gather. You know, the thought is, you go to Gourmet Alley, you pick up your dinner, and then you walk a block over and you eat at City Hall Park. This building, this structure right here, would be the new council chambers, or a flex space that could be council chambers and a public community room space, something along those lines. This is option B that they have presented. Recreation and aquatics would stay the same. We would flip the location of City Hall, so City Hall would then be at 6th and Church, where Wheeler currently is, and the arts and senior center would go to the corner of 7th and Church, where the annex currently is, or the annex parking lot is. And this would give us more of an oval-shaped park. And then, I would also like to point out the paseo that we would be adding between the library and the recreation center. The third option is similar, but with a rounded park this time, with a rounded council chambers and/or community space, and then an L-shaped City Hall, where all of our buildings reside along 7th Street. We'd have the aquatic center where City Hall is, then the recreation center, the arts and senior center, and then the City Hall. Are there any questions for me? Yes.
I mean, I'm not the planning commissioner or anything, but I do have a question. What happens to all the newly installed solar?
They would be repurposed.
Repurposed?
Yes. So, all of the buildings would become, at minimum, LEED certified for any new ones that are brought up, and then all of the existing solar panels would be repurposed onto the existing structures that we add.
Oh, okay, so they just go on the roof? Yeah. Oh, okay.
Right. The columns that they're mounted on would go away, but we would have, we would use those panels, and then we'd probably be purchasing additional panels for all of the buildings.
Oh, okay. Because I know they just went up, so.
Yes.
I had a quick question on that little section. It looks like some housing, is that housing there on the left-hand side?
Are you talking to these houses right here, off Doughty?
Yes.
Off Doughty? Yes, so those are three privately-owned homes. The city does not own those properties, and we have no plans to develop that area. The city owns the corner lot and the house next to them. As you can see, we keep that lot where the house is, just as trees and shrubbery, and then we would extend the parking lot into that corner lot that we own currently.
And then, I had a question about, sorry. What about ADA parking near City Hall and the arts center? Because it looks like all the parking is sort of far away from them.
Yeah, that's my question. Because there is a lot of kids, small kids, mother with multiple kids, even though it's a small walk, but they have to walk, you know, and when it rains, you know, or when the sun is too hot.
Yeah, totally understand. We have not finalized any of these plans, and that would be a part of the finalizing process as we work through some of the preliminary ideas that we deal with. One thing I would say is, they are going to be adding the angled street parking, and some of those stalls, you can make them wide enough. You can go, instead of the standard eight-foot wide, you could do a 10-foot or a 12-to-14-foot and designate those as ADA stalls. But it's really going to depend on what location we land on for each of the buildings. That was honestly one of my comments to ELS, was, we need to ensure that we have adequate parking for, in immediate proximity to both the senior center and the recreation center. Because as you can tell from all of these iterations we have, we are taking the parking lot that currently exists between the library and Wheeler Center and converting that into a park, so we will need to account for that in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, and why don't you keep the parking over there and then keep it centralized for all the facility, including the library, City Hall, arts and senior center, and the park? So, where the recreational aquatic is?
Where the current parking lot is for City Hall.
Yeah, just keep it there, and then move, you know, move the senior arts this way, and then, you know, just move things around, maybe recreational aquatics, you know, kind of put it on where the arts and senior is, kind of shift things around, because where the park is, even if you add extra parking for each building, but it's not enough parking for, you know, like, it's not where distributed parking for all the facilities. And during the summer, there is a lot of, like, you know, classes, even for the library.
So, our current parking count is just under 300, so this would actually be adding about 80 stalls to our footprint. The allocation of space is difficult, especially given the size of the park that we are trying to fit within the footprint, and we're trying to avoid the concrete jungle layout of parking in front of every single building. And we are trying to make space with, along the streets, both along 7th and Church. We would not be adding any angled parking along 6th Street due to the bus stops there. We want to keep those in place and keep those as active routes. But these are all, this is great feedback that we would want to share with ELS at our public meeting next Tuesday, the 8th.
Well, at a minimum, we have the ADA, even if it's just three or four spots, kind of get close to each, because whether it's library, the senior center, City Hall, I mean, all of them, really, need to have that kind of access, man. My question is, in front of the library, those gray areas, is that still?
This parking area? So, this is existing parking, and we would not change that.
Oh, okay.
That would stay existing parking. Those stalls might get reallocated and restriped, so that in theory, you know, if this stays the art and senior center right up here where Wheeler's at, in theory, you could allocate ADA parking for about half of this lot?
But still, it's very small, because I go to the library very often, and to find a parking over there, it's like almost impossible.
Right.
So, already as is. So, I actually have a suggestion, instead of putting the police over here on the side of the corner.
So, the police center is a currently existing building, and we're not going to be doing any.
You're not gonna, you cannot, you're not gonna put it down?
The library and the police center are both, within the last 20 years have been built, and we're not going to be investing any funds into those buildings.
Just the parking lot, you're gonna be moving to the other.
Correct. And the good thing about this parking lot as well, you can see this black dotted line right here. So, the current plan is to keep this as a fully-surface lot, which would give us about 380 stalls. But if we needed to, if the parking, if 380 stalls is not enough to account for this, this area is where we could fit a three-story garage, which would match the height of both the police station and the library, and each level would add an additional 90 stalls per level. So, you could get over 500 parking stalls if we added a parking garage at this location.
So, why not go for that, because that's what we get going? There's gonna be massive construction going on, just get it all done in one shot?
You know, it's a great question. My feeling on it is, if we can do it with surface lot, we should, because parking garages can get expensive, and we're going to be asking for a large sum of money. We don't know what that final number is yet, but anything we can do to try to keep those costs down so we can get the facilities in place that would really benefit our community, that's kind of where our focus is going to be. If it turns out that we need the parking, then we'll make the change and we'll go for the parking structures. But if we can keep our footprint smaller and get the arts and senior center, or a City Hall, or recreation and aquatics in its place, I think that's a fair trade-off that our community would appreciate.
Because whenever you're trying to make something feasible for everybody, right?
Right.
Parking is a huge consideration.
Totally.
So, because it doesn't matter how beautiful all the facilities are going to be and how attractive, because people have that sense that every time they go, they're going to be looking for parking for about 20 minutes and keep driving around.
Right. Yeah, it's a great point, and. Right, and I think the thought process for us also is, yes, right now, that is a big need, but we've also spent the last five-plus years investing significant funds into developing bike paths throughout the city, investing in bike lanes, widening roads where we need to, and we want this to be the footprint for the next 75 years. You know, Wheeler has been here for a long time, seen, the City Hall has been here for a long time. We want this to be the next topic of development discussions in 2100, right? We want it to be here for the next 60, 75 years. And we don't know what parking's gonna look like for then. So, and the good news about a parking garage as well, is it's not something we have to add now. We can build all of this stuff, and then in 2040, say, you know what, we do need additional parking. Let's build a garage now.
I think the problem here is not only additional parking, because again, as you said, it can be added on, but the location where it is at, it's like, I think it's like the worst location it can be, it's where it's, it's drawn over there.
Okay.
Because it's, again, we have the senior center, the senior arts and senior, and then have the libraries, when we have, like, young kids there, and it's the worst location.
Well, size-wise, if you swapped out the recreation and aquatic center with the parking.
With the parking. Or the Gilroy Civic Park, so keep the parking where it is at, put the recreational aquatics where the Gilroy Civic Park is, and then just where the parking, you know, it's designed to be, like, just move the Gilroy Civic Park. And also, that's gonna offer for those three houses over there, in a sense, like, a buffer, because, you know, it's a parking, it's gonna be noisy, so I think also because, you know, shouldn't be considered, because I'm assuming those people bought those houses a long time ago, and, you know, so I think in a sense, if you put the Gilroy Civic Park where the parking is.
But they won't park pretty close to downtown.
Yeah, so the thought in the location of the park is to create a connection to the downtown area. We've invested significant funds in downtown over the last decade, and we want to try and tie those together.
But if you create a connection with the downtown, but you don't create a connection with the library, arts and senior center.
Well, I think it does through the paseo. The paseo creates the alleyway that connects all of the buildings. But I hear your point, that's a good point.
I understand you are not doing that with a mobility issue, you're not doing that with the three, four kids, even disabled kids sometimes, or disabled elderly, that's where it's, under the sun, under the rain, that's what we are talking about. So, it doesn't, if you, you have to think about the big picture. You can, you know, when you design a park like this, or who'd design, nor you.
And I would advise, this is preliminary drawings. We are still going for feedback.
I understand, I understand that.
This is gonna get redrawn several times over before we submit anything for final vote and approval.
I understand that.
So, these are the early ideas, and we're trying to gather as much feedback and support as we can.
Yeah, I understand that, but for me, this is a big issue.
I have a question as well.
Oh, go ahead.
Ryan, number one, are the, are any of the buildings such as the City Hall and the arts and seniors multi-level buildings? Because when I went to the first meeting, it kind of looked that way.
All of these buildings would be two stories.
Great.
We're not going above three.
No.
And our plan is to try to keep every footprint within two. The arts and senior center, this would be a performing arts center, so it would have a small stage and space for our performing arts community to have a place to perform. And then, it would also feature all the senior activities, as well as communal and multifunctional spaces. So, it wouldn't just, you wouldn't have just dedicated rooms for one specific thing, we'd be able to flip the rooms.
Yeah, that's sort of what it looked like at the initial walkthrough meeting that had the boards.
Yep, and City Hall would also be a two-story building as well.
Great, great to hear that. And then, another question, on the Gilroy Civic Park, whether it ends up a rectangular oval or whatever, are you of the mindset similar to the city of Morgan Hill, amphitheater kind of stuff, where they have their Friday night music during the summer? Well-attended, by the way, I've gone for years. And does, there's a lot of, you know, that's in the middle of downtown, too, and people work it out.
Yep.
And I have to take a handicap spot, because I have handicapped people with me. So, it can be worked out.
So, that is all a part of the thought process here. That's also the, part of the purpose of the paseo, is so you could bring in stuff like farmers' markets and things like that, and really help activate the civic center.
And another thing, I was on an initial committee, while I was sitting on the Parks Matter Commission, and I think it had to do with mobility and walkability in the downtown area. We met at, I think, the Neon Exchange and had several meetings, and this whole idea was discussed on there. So, this didn't come out of thin air. This has been a communal wish and a council directive, so I think this is something that we need to realize, that it just didn't pop up out of the air, so that's my only comment. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ryan.
I have a question. I love the plan, by the way. My question is, when, how does the funding work and how does construction start? I missed the first community meeting, I will be at the next one.
So, we haven't finalized yet. Our current plan is to go for bonds, and we would phase it out. That's also going to play a role in which buildings go where and what gets built, because, you know, if you're taking down Wheeler, right, you have to keep the senior center up so we can still keep recreational activities open and senior activities open and available. So, there's, there's a lot of balls there to juggle, and that's some of the stuff we're trying to work through, but we won't really have those answers fully until we finalize what the layout's gonna look like.
Okay, but it will be a phased plan, that's, okay.
Yes, yes.
I had a question about the, we are going for a grant for some electric car charger, thank you.
Yes.
And those are, those, that location.
I'm actually the project manager for that.
Oh, okay, okay, so they're, they're, that's included, okay.
Yeah, so, I can tell you, we're, those locations, that's gonna go right along here, right along that back strip of the library right there.
So, same spot, okay.
Yeah, so that won't be impacted at all. We might lose power for a couple of weeks, but otherwise, yeah, those are, those are gonna stay. I'm excited for that.
And then, for the park, I, so, you know, I'm imagining it's possibly, could be like pop-up events could happen there. Will there be the ability for folks to drive onto the facility to unload and unload their stuff? I mean, it's just, you know, I'm not asking, you know, these are just my thoughts, so, you know.
We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet.
Okay, perfect, okay.
But, given my background, yes, that will be designed into it, and you can kind of see an access point right here through the parking lot, right at the beginning of the paseo, and you can lay down stuff called terraplast or terratrack, which is drivable, and it will protect the ground and subsoil, so.
Interesting.
We could easily make that possibility, yes.
And then, is the pool, inside or outside pool?
It would be an outside pool. We would not do an indoor-covered pool.
And then, security, outdoor security cameras, are there gonna be anything like that, any sort of security?
Again, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet, but my assumption, given, you know, if this is built by 2030, 2032, it would be a requirement, yeah.
Okay. And then, two more things. Can we get these drawings and email, just so that we have them and so we can help promote the Tuesday?
I believe they will be available publicly following the meeting on Tuesday, the 8th, on the project website. City of Gilroy.org, and then the, we have our own project website, and the slides should be posted there.
And then, this is just something I noticed, that there's a lot of space here with trees, and we have the park, but I was really inspired, I was visiting a client in San Jose near Campbell, and there is a pocket park there, and they utilized that space so well that places that just might have trees had picnic tables.
Yep.
And I was amazed, I was like, wow, who designed this park? And I would just like to ask that you consider checking out.
So, we have actually talked about turning this parking lot here, the one that's on the opposite side of 7th Street at the corner of Roseanne, or Rosanna. We've talked about turning that into a pocket park. It's on the list, but it's also one of those things where, depending on what buildings and facilities we put on this side, we might need these 19 parking stalls that we have there. So, it's not something that we finalized yet, but it is something we are aware of and thinking of.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, even the green space around where you have trees, I mean, this pocket park, it's called Stanovich Family Park, and it's on 316 Union Avenue in Campbell. It's very inspiring, so just asking to consider it.
Yeah, that's a beautiful park, I used to live in Campbell.
Oh, so you know, you know, hey, we've got it going today. So, yeah, love that park.
I have a question regarding the Aquatic Center that we have in Gilroy. Is this, because are we not gonna utilize the existing one anymore?
The one over at Christopher?
Yeah.
So, we would keep the one at Christopher, this would not impact it. The thought process behind this pool here is that Christopher is on the northwest corner of the city, and it's not really accessible for most of our population unless you live over by Christopher. I, my house looks at Christopher, so we can walk to that park, but if you live on the other side of, like, Long Meadow, that's a long walk and it's difficult to get to. The thought for this pool would be to put a centralized, free public pool, where all of our residents within the downtown area and on the south side of the city have access to it.
Have you guys thought about splash pad instead?
That would be included, so the two pools that we've looked at, this one, the one that's kind of square, it's not an Olympic pool, but it would be a larger swim pool, and then this smaller one would be more like a kid's area that's half splash pad, half walk-in pool, with some depth to it, but nothing more than like four or five feet. Mountain View just opened a new aquatic center like two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, and it's a great mirror for what we want to do here. So, if you guys want to ever check that out, check out the Mountain View Park. I don't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but it's relatively new.
And what says, Recreation and Aquatics, is the recreation, is that the youth, I know there was a lot of talk that.
So, the recreation, recreation is kind of an all-encompassing term for us. This would be the gymnasium for basketball, pickleball, this would be multifunctional rooms and spaces, this would have a youth center, potentially a teen center. It would be a massive facility that would house pretty much anything we wanted to put in there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We've also talked about having a second story, you can kind of see the rough outline of it here, the square. This would be the gymnasium with a second-story outdoor walking track.
Ooh.
So, you'd have a little shade, elevated walking track, yeah, it'd be pretty nice. We went and viewed, I believe it was Redwood City, theirs is in, it's about 80% through construction, and they're, they're kind of the model for what we're looking at, so.
Yeah, my only concern is just the parking, and the, even though little walk, under the rain, under the sun, with kids disabled, so.
Are there any other questions?
Might be too soon. Are you considering any sort of community murals or engagement for decor?
Throughout the space, we haven't gotten to that level of it yet, but I'm sure that's something that we will be pursuing, just especially given the fact that the library, the exterior wall between the library and City Hall is painted, I'm sure we would continue that theme.
I was just gonna ask, who's gonna winnow it down? We have three pretty good plans here.
Right, so we will have the public community meeting on Tuesday, and ELS will elicit feedback from the community between those two sessions, and then we'll have an online survey that's open for 10 days, and so if you're not able to make the meeting, you can go in, you can view the slides, you can view all the information, you can complete the survey and give us your feedback, and then we'll be meeting with ELS to review all of that and compile what we think is a combination. a combination of the feedback and what most of the community wants.
And at some point, it's going to go to the city council?
So we'll go through that, we'll go through that process, and we'll come down to one idea, and we'll bring that back to the community on May 20th. We'll have them critique it, and then, once we get all of their feedback, we'll create a finalized plan, and we'll take that to council.
Are all, all three options roughly in the same cost?
Yeah, it really, the cost is really broken down mostly by building and structure, because, you know, once you start demoing areas, it doesn't really matter. If you demo this upper corner, right, if you demo Wheeler and the green space where the park and the annex are, and then this parking lot, that's going to cost the same no matter what you build back on top of it. And so for us, the way we're kind of focusing on it is, what is the recreation center going to cost, right? What is the aquatic center going to cost? Whatever those costs are, it's not really going to change depending on the orientation. Exactly.
And is the grass area, is that, are you planning to put regular grass?
Again, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet, but my assumption would be it's grass.
Okay.
Turf gets too hot and it's very expensive to maintain.
And Santa Clara, I think it was planning to ban anyways.
So I used to work at, for the 49ers in Levi Stadium, and one of my job roles there was handling the paperwork for flipping the field.
Yeah, and you know that they also start with the, there is some cancer-related issues with that, too, with the artificial turf.
So my assumption would be grass.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you.
Regarding the overflow parking, well, I call it overflow parking on the corner of.
Right here?
Yeah, right there. I'd recommend you keep it because of that civic park in the future, if it ends up there, because people will absolutely park there and walk to the civic park for concerts. Also, people will park there and walk to City Hall.
And we might need those stalls, which is why we haven't committed to it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn that into a, I mean, I'm just suggesting.
Right.
But I would really seriously consider it. If you want to do benches and stuff like Steph's talking about, I would actually put those in the nice areas around the senior center, because there's a green space there, perfect place for, you know, have little picnics for, you know, the seniors or the families with kids that just want to have a little lunch or something like that.
And we'll get, we'll get to that level of detail whenever we bring the final presentation to the council.
I think what some folks don't realize, and I may be into the wrong assumption, but once this goes through all its phases and it comes to council, then this has to be approved as a master plan.
Yes.
It also has to have an environmental impact report. So this is not something you're going to see as a design thing to build within the next five years, if you're lucky.
So a good reference is Redwood City. Their master plan passed in 2015, and their building, their first building as a part of that is about 80% complete. So they're on about that 10-year track.
Yeah, so I think this is something for some of the other commissioners who have these concerns, this is not something that has immediate horizons, even if we had the funding.
We understand that, we understand. I work in construction.
Well, that's great. It just didn't sound like you understood it.
So, yeah, I, that's exactly, when I was talking about the pocket park, that's exactly was my, what I was envisioning, other than just trees and, you know, that became more of a functional space. And I agree with you that space should, you know.
And that's why that space has been excluded from these drawings and left as-is. We're really focusing on the block, you know, everything from Doughty through Church. And if, if it comes up and it's something that we want to consider, we do have that option, because the city owns the lot and I believe the adjoining house, but we wouldn't touch that. We're just focused on this parking lot. But, yeah, we know that it's there, but we're excluding it for now. We're just keeping that in the back of our mind.
Another possibility, too, is to make us a staff parking. So for example, instead of the, the people who works at the, even the recreational center or City Hall, they park over there, because you have to cross a street. And if there is more parking available for the people with, again, the kids, the elderly, you know, they don't have to cross a street, that would be safer and staff.
The good news is, is we have a little bit of time to figure that out, the parking puzzle.
Yeah, it's just, yes.
Ryan, just one question. Will any of these plans in our consite review come back to planning, or is this going to be strictly ministerial?
So right now, we're focused on just developing the master plan.
Okay.
We have no immediate construction plans or deadlines or target goals or anything along those lines. Our goal is to develop the master plan that becomes, you know, our, our reference for what the next 10, 15, 20 years of building look like around, around the civic center.
Commissioners, any more questions for Ryan?
Awesome. Well, thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing you all on the 8th, 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
And that's at Wheeler Center, correct?
Correct, Wheeler Center.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving on to 8.2, planning division staff approvals.